It is 6 o'clock. I will open the Free Town Lakeville Regional School Committee for September 21st, 2022. The first item on the agenda, we will do a roll call to open the meeting as well as go into executive session immediately following. For those in the audience on that, we'll come back from executive session approximately 6:30. Can we do a quick roll call?
Karen, Jane Fox.
Yes.
Steve Bowlin.
Yes.
Sherri Barron.
Yes.
Jen Blum.
Yes.
Josh Clark.
Yep.
John Burke.
Yes.
Will Segway.
Yes.
Yes.
And we'll be back approximately 6:30. All right. Thank you very much for everyone's patience here. We'll return back to the open session, seeing that we have the administration with us. And I will ask if anybody is recording the meeting outside of Lake Camp. Seeing none. I will just say that Lake Camp has been a great partner of the district, not just of these meetings, but also other events during the school day where parents cannot attend. And on Monday, they just had their 10th year anniversary of that. So I say thank you and congratulations to that. So appreciate the efforts there. I'd ask if you can join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda is public participation. Anyone here for public participation? Seeing none. I'll roll into the acceptance of minutes on June 22nd. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I abstain.
Abstain.
Blum abstains as well. Also entertain a motion for the minutes on August 24th.
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Not any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? An abstention? I abstain.
I abstain. So I don't abstain since I'm 6:22. I do abstain from 8:24. Sorry.
And I will entertain a motion for the minutes of the executive session.
So moved.
Motion and a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I abstain and Blum abstain. Just to move things around on the agenda here a little bit, we'd like to bring up the superintendent's report at the top of it. Do you have any objection to that?
No.
We just decided.
How was everybody? Opening of school has been fantastic. The last time we met, we were just preparing for opening. We have been in close to 70 classrooms throughout the district, and it's just been a wonderful experience. The joy has invigorated. I was speaking with a teacher today who said it's the first time that she can remember that she started school the right way, meaning it's been a long three years. So teachers are back doing what they do. Kids are back doing what they do. So it's a wonderful thing. Let me work on my way down. Transportation. We have had a number of conversations, Steve and Kara and I and Kenny Rosendies, along with Elaine Mett, to talk about how we can begin to look at where we have some transportation glitches, where we have some concerns in terms of, and I was very open with Kenny that my biggest concern is time on learning. And so every time buses are not at school on time, we have a concern. And there are a couple of buses that have been arriving late. And so we're looking at options as to what we can potentially do. I thought we had a pretty effective meeting, Steve, on this past week, on the 20th. And we will continue to update you. I continue to encourage parents to contact first the bus company if there's a concern. Certainly contact building principal and certainly contact me. And we will go from there. You have in your packets our updated class size rosters. The addition of the third grades, that has been a boon to the energy of our third grade teachers. You know, it's certainly something that we have to continue to look at moving forward and what's it going to mean for next year and what's it going to mean for grades? Is this an anomaly? But our numbers are pretty good, and it has relieved some frustration from some of our third grade teachers. So we're pleased with that. Any questions on class sizes?
Just to reiterate that, I think this is something that we need to work on as a larger audience. I feel like we solve class size in a vacuum, and I don't mean that negatively, right? We solve it for that current year. But you know, fast forward this, we are going to have a problem at Grays, right? And there is no easy fix based upon the team teaching. So I think we need to mind share what are our options? And I don't think anything is off the table, but we have to just figure this out, right? Up to including of, do we restructure how our schools are today, the elementary schools, right? I am really concerned about the numbers coming up from Lakeville. We have a lesson learned about the train station coming in, the train coming into Lakeville. We're going to have that coming into Free Towns. We at least have a history and what to potentially expect. So you know, not going to be something we're going to solve with a one-year budget item, but we need to start that discussion early because it's going to be a continued concern here.
You even look at second grade in Essowamse. It's large, 145 students. So it will continue to trickle. And so it's a conversation that I think we need to look at as we continue to look at school improvement plans and everything that we're talking about. We need to look at things on not just a one-year, but a three-year basis. Where are we going to be and what is the smartest path for us to take and the most fiscally appropriate? We are in the midst of going through evaluations, both with administration as well as with all teachers. And Terri today gave a wonderful presentation at Grays. The evaluation tool is only as good as the seriousness of purpose that we use it for. The idea is not to catch people. The idea is to help people grow. And so we, as administration, we have to make sure that we're preparing teachers and principals to create goals, to create professional learning goals, student learning goals that are personalized and certainly can help our students, but also help our teachers. I've seen too many goals over the years that are not effective, that are one-size-fits-all, and everybody's in a very different place in terms of their experience. So we're asking teachers really to start thinking outside the box for their own personal goals, professional goals. And so we're excited about that. We will be going to each school and talking about evaluations. I'm talking individually with each principal about their own goals. We are making a change in regard to school improvement plans. The last few years, school improvement plans have been one-year plans. And I understand that, to get through COVID. And where are we? We now need to start thinking beyond that. So our school improvement plans will be three-year plans because in order for us to really create a goal for a school, we have to be able to see what happened after a year. We do not get data until October. MCAS data, we are not getting, it's just embargoed now. And so we're going to just be hamster wheel. Get the data from the year before to determine were our goals effective and are we going in the right direction? Do we need to tweak them? Use the year and at the beginning of the third year, that's when we begin to see what we're doing and how effective we are. So a one-year school improvement plan, you're not going to see when we present. I think that's been a change over the last few years. And that's very typical to have three-year plans, not one-year plans. Questions, Sharon?
We have three-year plans also.
We have had some three-year plans in the past, but over the last couple of years, we've had one-year plans simply because of COVID and trying to survive through. So you have a district improvement plan, which is a three-year plan.
Okay, maybe that's what I.
Right. So that's the district.
Strategic plan.
Yeah, strategic plan, district improvement plan. That's the three-year plan. So that's the year I take this year, using entry plans and everything else, to determine where are we going for the next three years. You then combine that with school improvement plans, and then you're streamlined going in the right direction. I'm just removing the one-year school improvement plan and having that be a three-year plan so that we're much more cohesive. Questions?
Which is another thing on your list. We need an updated strategic plan.
Yeah, so it's over in '22. So we need to start working on that. That is certainly, you know, on our, being new, so part of my job is to create the entry plan, can't create a strategic plan unless there's been a lot of information gathered. So we're doing a little bit of it all. By the end of the year, you will have one for them done. Grounds and maintenance. I know that there were some concerns and correct concerns about what was happening with fields. We were, and understand as a former coach, that I've never dealt with a field not being lined through the beginning of the season. I've never heard of it. And so we've had lots of conversation. As we all know, our maintenance and grounds keepers are doing an incredible job in opening up the buildings, but we are down. We are very short-staffed. We all know that. And so we had, basically Greg and his group with Karen and I behind him, the buildings had to be opened and they had to be prepared. So what we have done, everything's been lined, we're set with that. Fields have now been seeded and aerobated for the spring, so we're in a good place there. But Karen and I started to look at the idea of an automated system, which a number of schools are going to, in which it will save a tremendous amount of time. So basically what it is, this automated system, we set it up to the parameters within our fields, it lines it without anybody there. And so our grounds and maintenance, and if they have an app on their phone, if it needs more paint, they just run over it. But they're not sitting there for eight hours to do a football field. They can then be doing work within the buildings. So it makes much more sense. We have hired two new people for maintenance and grounds, one of which has tremendous experience from Tabor Academy as a groundskeeper and field liner. So that certainly will help. We are still looking for two more people.
We have three vacancies currently.
So we are still looking for, you know, we put things out on social media and we're asking lots of people. So we're trying to stay ahead of that game. But I think we're in a good place now. It was frustrating certainly to open the season, without question. And we are looking as to how we begin to improve all of that, which brings us into, you have in your packet, the capital plan, starting a capital plan committee. And so Karen and I put together a preliminary idea as to what we think would be a good idea of representatives, certain people, not particular people, but certainly facilities director and tech and representative from each elementary school, intermediate, middle school, high school rep, school committee from both Free Town and Lakeville, and really sit down and start looking at where are we going to go and where do we want to go as a district.
This plan, is the plan you're talking about, the memo that Kara sent to you?
Yeah. So that was, all that was, was Karen and I were going back and forth as to, we think we really need to start this. I know that there's interest in the community from people that I have spoken with, interest in terms of what are we looking at? So I want to present to all of you the opportunity to begin to start this. Questions?
I think this is a great idea. I would encourage us to have the regional FinCom committee kind of looped in on this multiple times during the year.
Oh, certainly, certainly. This piece is about starting it and then getting regional FinCom involved. Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
We need to resume, we need to bring that regional FinCom committee back this year.
Yep. How long has it been since it's?
I think only a year.
Just a year?
Last year. Is that right, Steve?
We reached out last year, but it was not from a meeting perspective. And it came to a point where Ashley was having ongoing conversations with the town accountants, and that's where the comfort level was. So it wasn't that we didn't reach out to schedule one, but I think we can get back on a meeting for that.
This is where also conversations that we've already talked about here in terms of class size and what are we going to do with buildings and all of the changes, great changes coming down the road for our community, we need to be ahead of it.
So because this is one that we need to, actually requires a vote to establish a subcommittee, so I want to put that for the full committee as far as any objections or questions on that capital subcommittee aspect of it.
I don't think, I think a lot of people are missing it. Yes, I don't have, none of us have this. Sherri was the only one missing it. Me. And I picked it up the other day. I'm looking at my.
I can give you mine. Oh, you didn't have one either? Don't worry.
I think it was in the packet that was electronic and not in the.
Oh, not in the actual packet.
Not the printed version.
I think it's a good idea.
Oh, yeah. I think it's a good idea, too.
Just a second. I think it's a great idea, so would love to entertain that.
So I will entertain a motion to establish the capital subcommittee as part of the school committee.
With that composition that's proposed.
Well, I think the composition is something that could be dictated at the, you know, established at the first meeting. I think we just further establish what the committee will do, right? Which is going to be the capital piece. And I think ultimately come before this committee with the recommendation as far as what we do over the next few years. And I think to Sherri's point, buy-in from the regional FinCom would actually help move this along greatly.
Sure.
So.
Absolutely.
So I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
You gave the motion, so you can't do the second.
Oh, I did?
So I have a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Makes it easy for Renee. Pass the names.
Second.
I will go back to any other questions to the superintendent's report thus far and see if there's anything else that you have in there.
I have a couple more things.
Yep. Okay. Want to continue on?
Sure. Mr. Burke and I will be attending the MASC, MASSS conference in November. We had a conversation today, we're going to be going to the same workshops. I'm going to let Mr. Burke decide where we're going. But I think it's an opportunity for superintendent and school committee members to begin talking about seeing where the state is looking, because MASC and MASSS are certainly working in conjunction as to a number of things coming down the road. So I think it's an opportunity for us to have some conversation. NIESC is coming this coming weekend. It starts, I say weekend, it really is Monday morning when they will be here. Traditionally, if you're familiar, NIESC used to start on Sundays. They would come and it would be a big dog and pony show and you would serve dinner and it's not like that anymore. It's really Monday mornings, which makes it a little bit easier on districts, and we don't need hotels because we don't have a lot around here. So that certainly is easier. I will continue to say that although NIESC is a high school accreditation, and that's what it is, this doesn't happen if we don't have a solid primary school, intermediate school and middle school. So there is an interconnection, and I want this community to understand that, that the high school will get, we will get our report and we will find out exactly where things are really strong and where we need some tweaking. Caitlin and her team have done a fantastic job preparing for this. I will tell you, it is a monumental task, the amount of artifacts that they're looking for, curriculum artifacts, student work artifacts, conversations. I know that both Will and Jan are going to be speaking to NIESC, is that correct? On the 27th.
26.
26.
26.
Monday.
Yes, 26.
Okay. So you will be representing school committee, and then they will be speaking with all of us at one time. Couple more things, just real quick. The website continues to be updated. We have added the opportunity for the website to be translated in over 100 languages. I do not know if you saw that, but if you go into the top right-hand corner where it says English, a family who doesn't speak native English can find any language they want, which is a much more inclusive approach, very typical in almost every district around the country, so it's nothing unusual. We are continuing to update that. We are excited to say that on October 13th, Unified Basketball has their first game. The reason why I'm talking about it is because it's going to be something you haven't seen before. So I am inviting all of school committee, will get an email from me at 3:40. It's at 3:45 on October 13th. We are going to pack the house. All of the teams, Mr. Cabusio has invited, they will all be there in uniform. Cheerleaders will be there. We're going to have music there. CPAC will be there. We're really excited. We're going to invite parents from, all CPAC parents from Free K all the way up to see really what we are about in terms of special education support. So it'll be a wonderful experience. So we're excited. So we're all excited. I know the sophomore class has already gotten involved. Student council has come to me, they want to be involved. There's going to be a white outside and a blue outside, and so we're really excited for it. So it'll be great. I'll send you all an email, but I just wanted to put it on Lake Camp because this is the last time before that event. The statue of the eagle at the middle school is being removed. It is rotting out and it is unsafe. So I just wanted to say that. The falcon, excuse me, is being removed. We are in conversation as to what will replace it, but it also brought up the conversation, Mr. Higgins, our principal Higgins went to the school committee. They are very interested in becoming the Lakers and not adopting anything else but becoming a Laker. So that is a conversation that he is having with the PTO. They're going to talk to the student body, and so I just wanted to let you all know. I think it's a great idea. I also, the principals have started to talk with their PTOs. Some, I went to a PTO meeting at FES, we talked a little bit about, they talked about getting gear for the Free Town Foxes, and they're frustrated that the end of third grade, it's done because it's not blue and white. It doesn't continue. So they started having this conversation, and so the Free Town Foxes are staying. So no one has to worry about that. Tradition is vitally important. But they are talking about reinventing and recreating what the Fox looks like and keeping the colors, blue and white with a little accent of red. So if you buy something, a family buys something, you go from third grade to fourth grade, it tends to stay the same in terms of colors. So I will keep you updated on all of that.
Any questions for Mr. Strauss?
On that convention, did I hear you say that you and John are going to go to the same.
Yes.
Presentations? I don't know about that. I mean, some of those presentations, having been going there for years and years, some of those presentations are designed more for administrators, some more designed for school committee. I know when Gene and I and some of the other people.
Divide and conquer.
We would go a different one in Bridge. I'm not sure that that's a good idea.
So with two of us going, and if you look at what they're focused on this year, so whether we want to have the discussion or not, the focus is in a lot of ways on diversity. That is where MASC is going, that is where MASSS is going. Certainly, we can go to separate ones. I just, there needs to be some commonalities in terms of what we talk about. We certainly can come together afterwards. I've taken both approaches, certainly not as superintendent, but in terms of going is with principals and superintendents and school committee members. And we have found it very effective when we're all here, the same thing. But I'm not sure.
Well, it reduces the number of things you can experience, so.
Right, but with two of us, there aren't going to be a lot of things we're going to go to. They've really changed. And I will send you all, you all have it, I believe, what the options are for everybody to attend.
You get that on the mail.
Yep. So we certainly can talk more. Last thing, last time we met, we talked about Fat Cousins. Fat Cousins donated hundreds. They did it themselves. They had a donation drive from families across the two communities. They donated hundreds of supplies, which were distributed to all five schools. It was wonderful. Renee, poor Renee was counting pencils and backpacks, but I can't even imagine the estimate as to how much money it was. But we have thanked Fat Cousins profusely, and I just wanted to publicly thank them on here for their work.
Any questions? I'll just end that from a school opening perspective. This year feels different. It's not because we have new administration or what have you, but even the building principals and the teachers, especially after school, they're engaging with students outside of a classroom, right? So we have a large campus here, so all the sporting events here, one, you see it across the board, across the fields. So I definitely, I don't want to do the return to normal, but it just, it feels different that I think that there is that engagement across the board, and I think it's being felt by teachers, I know administrations. It's great to see building principals engaging with students outside of the classroom. So again, we're not at October 1st. That's still a long year ago.
Yeah, we're getting ready, you know, Terri will be talking about, you know, MCAS and I-ready and all of that. The work is getting done, and I think our kids are in a good place. I'm very enthusiastic from what I'm seeing from staff. It's been wonderful.
Great, thank you. So a great segue, speaking of outside the classroom, two great programs in the district. We have presentations from Lisa Patrico, who heads up our extended year program, and Diane, who heads up the community recreation. I cannot say enough that these programs are hugely important to these two communities and that I'm excited to hear more about that. So, Miss Patrico.
So before I start, can you hear me? All right. Before I start, let me just add my two marketing cents to the Foxes thing. If the Fox wore a white T-shirt that said Free Town with an L, Lakers, red, white and blue, that might, it's like a Peewee Lakers kind of thing. So it's like a roll into the big school. Anyway, that's just my two cents, you can take it or leave it. All right, I'm going to start off a little bit differently. I can stand here and I can review the packet and I can showcase the successes of the after school and extended programs. And I'm really happy to do all of that. What the packet doesn't tell you is what happens behind the scenes. With every new superintendent, business manager, school committee member, parent, the question always becomes, is this school? I'm sure all of you have asked the same question and have tossed it around back and forth in your head. Sometimes it's school, sometimes it's not school, sometimes it's school when it matters, and sometimes it's school when it doesn't matter. All in all, what truly matters at the end of the day is that my team and I still do what we can do to provide quality out-of-school-time programs that incorporates meaningful activities for the children of Free Town and Lakeville in a safe environment. I really could have never dreamed that. Free Town and Lakeville in a safe environment. I really could have never dreamed that 20 years ago, I'd be standing right here at this time, still growing, still creating, still developing programs to help working families and to enrich the out-of-school time and opportunities for children. This is funny, because it has been said, and I know many of you, but over and over, I keep hearing, "I really don't know what you do." Well, I effectively manage the operation of the Free Town-Lakeville programs by executing organizational purposes, monitoring the budget, collaborating when needed with the superintendent, the business manager, directors, principals, teachers, and parents. I create, design, implement, manage, and evaluate, and expand on the programs. I ensure that we build a program to promote the district goals for safety, kindness, respectfulness, responsibility, while building standards of academic, physical, recreational, and social skills. I build partnerships with students, schools, and parents. I lead, coach, develop, supervise, and retain out-of-school program employees and site coordinators. I ensure that regular and transparent program monitoring and evaluation. I create monitoring for all programs and their budgets, oversee continued refinement of all aspects of communications for the programs. I'm not done. I ensure that staff provide timely and responsive communication with all families. I evaluate the effectiveness of current programs and make appropriate improvements. I monitor the needs and interests in students of families and responsible, and respond accordingly. I manage incoming tuition monies to meet and approve the spending and meet the needs of all programs. I have weekly meetings with site supervisors. I visit site visits and monitor all four sites. I have the Vacation Club, the After the Bell, the Pre-K Plus, the SCORE, and I also have Kids Cafe. I know where every student is on any given day, AM, PM, or both, in all four sites. I accommodate last-minute pleas from family. I am in constant contact with each secretary in each building. I create fun, monthly-themed curriculum with cooking, art, and social skill activities. I go to Shaw's, and I shop, and I sort, and I deliver, and I distribute all the goods to all the programs. I maintain and monitor all POs. I submit payroll for all programs, and I monitor to make sure that we are within our budget. What I'm most proud of is the team that I have, Matt Olivera, Jenny Patterson, and Donna Bowlby. They have been with me for over 17 years, not to get rich, because we don't do that here, but because they believe in what we do and what we provide. There is probably so much more that I can say, but I don't. When I look at you all, you may have children that you have nurtured through the years to ensure their success. This is and forever will be my baby. With that being said, I am more than happy to review the current status of the programs and to answer any questions that you may have. I want to say that I want to echo Steve. This year, I have felt a different, maybe it's because COVID has been uplifted, and we all feel better about seeing one another, but I feel the energy is a little bit different, and I think that that started with Kids Cafe. Like, I cannot tell you, Kids Cafe was crazy this year, and if anybody came into the building, you would have seen kids engaged, excited to be with one another. Kids like, haven't seen each other in a long time from Free Town to Lakeville, and they're finally getting together, and they're exploring, and they're doing things, and they're so, so, so happy. All of my staff want to come back next year. That says a lot. That means that it wasn't overwhelming. That means it was developed appropriately, and that means the training that I gave was a success, and that the oversight from all of my site supervisors also were, and parents were also engaged. So it was truly a team effort, and I can answer any questions about that. I will say, it has been difficult, because there have, there has to be some sort of threshold. And before, we used to say, okay, you can come a family. Steve wants to come Monday, Wednesday, Thursday. Gene wants to come the opposite days. Jen wants to come two days. We can't do that anymore. So what we implemented was no less than three days a week at this point, because we wanted to make sure that those working families that work every single day of the week are taken care of, and that was our main priority. So, I mean, it does come with some hard decisions, but as you can see, it was a success. Before and after school program, I mean, there are some downfalls to having four sites. It is extremely difficult. I don't want to say on me, because Matt is truly a big asset to the program, but it is difficult to make sure we have storage, make sure we can use other classrooms, make sure we have refrigeration, which I thank the superintendent for helping with that. Last year, we were daily taking milk back and forth to schools, you know, all kinds of, you know, breakfast and snack things. We were, we were literally a bus going back and forth to each school to ensure that they had everything that they needed, because A, we didn't have, you know, we didn't have the storage, and we didn't have the refrigeration. So it has been taken care of. The before-school program services 680 students a week. The after-school program, we are at 655 students a week, and I don't want to go over, and you might have, may have questions about the enrollment from each site and what that involves. Vacation Club, I think that parents were still a little lary, you know, we still, we're in the midst of, we're just getting out of COVID, so we didn't have the participation as we usually have, but I guarantee that this year will be somewhat different. I am so excited and happy to report that yesterday, I sent out an email to all of the schools, except for the high school, about After the Bell, and I have gotten a huge amount of emails that I have to report back to of all kinds of teachers wanting to teach all kinds of things in all of the schools. And last year, it was difficult, because teachers were overwhelmed. They were tired, and I don't blame them, because we were all tired. But this year, they have a freshness, a renewedness about them, and I'm looking forward to presenting that in the future. SCORE, Music Academy, Mr. Duff and I have been working on that. We're going to do that for fifth graders, and we're going to start that on 10/18. So SCORE is back at it. All the programs are full-fledged ahead, and I am happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Yeah, the four sites, great that you're doing it, but a Herculean effort, is just saying. What would help with that, other than all the shuttling that has to be done, all the oversight? You have site coordinators, but what else would benefit the overall programming if you maintain this four-site configuration, which apparently you are?
I think that having Matt probably in more often than he is right now is probably would help, just because he's schlepping things back and forth, and I don't think he's paid appropriately, but that's another conversation. The Pre-K Plus program, which I haven't even talked about, is at max. It cannot grow anymore. I need space. I share a room with the PTO. We have a participation, and you can look back. The Pre-K Plus program, although it is not mandatory, it is so needed, because preschool parents need to work full-time, and preschool's only half-day. So it gives those parents the ability to have their students in school for a full day. And Jenny does a Herculean task of mirroring what the school day does to what we do. So while the school might be counting with apples, we're not only counting with apples, we're cooking with apples. So it's more of an enrichment program, and, you know, I, next year, or this coming, at the end of this coming school year, I will invite you all to our graduation that we have for the Pre-K Plus program for those little ones going into kindergarten, which we do every year, and it's awesome. So I have a good grasp on things. I think that still being in four schools is difficult, but I think I'm adapting, and I think the perfectionary vision, Will, that I have sometimes has to go by the wayside, and it has to be more about homework and a smaller themed unit every month, not what we're used to.
Right, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
I'll just make a comment. We all probably remember a number of years ago, Lisa invited us to this summer Kids Cafe, to visit that. And one day during the summer, I called her and asked if I could come with another school committee member who was more in the committee. And I'm glad to tell you, I walked into the cafeteria, it was just about noon time, and they were just, it looked just like an elementary school, intermediate school cafeteria in the middle of the day. Every seat was taken, everybody was eating, everybody seemed relatively happy, except for the little woman that talked to me about she didn't like her lunch that mom had packed. And I looked at everybody working together, and I thought, this looks like a school. I mean, this is a school that she runs. She's like the principal of the school. She's probably like the superintendent of the school. I mean, she wears every hat possible, whatever needs to be done. I watched it. It's amazing. And I think we, many of us, remember, she talks about her baby. We remember the nine months before that she was planning to open this, and we heard about it. And so it technically is a fact, your baby. Outstanding job.
Yeah, agreed.
Thank you.
Yeah, along the same line, I was here with her again when she started, and the expansion that's been created over the years, and it is the best public relations program that you could possibly ask for. You couldn't hire somebody to promote the schools like that. And it's just a tribute to her and the others to be where we are now, despite any little problems that come up. We are really lucky to have this program.
And all the enrollment, and all the enrollment, yep.
Yeah, and I mean, I'd be remiss if I didn't thank Lisa again. I think every year she presents, and we just see the full scope of the programs that she's put in place. And when you say that it's your baby, it truly is, right, from the ground up. And I think even when I was a dopey college kid, I think I worked the very first year at Kids Cafe back in the day. And just to see what it's gone from, from that time to now is just incredible. And I think it's important to say publicly that not only is this a huge, huge service to our community and our parents, but it's also a revenue builder for the district, right? And not only a revenue builder for the district, but our programs also supplement some other programs in the district that might not bring in some money year to year. So just a huge thank you to you and all the work that you do. I mean, I hear from parents all the time, and it's always overwhelmingly positive, and they wouldn't know what they would do without the program. So, thank you.
No, thank you. Let me just finish by saying that I will tell you that at my meeting with the superintendent and Kara, we have decided that this is school, and we will work that way. And he has opened the door to me working with Ashley and working together for the betterment of kids, because she has things that I need to know as we try to work with kids and trying to catch up from what we've lost over the couple of years, right? So when we're having homework help, we know, we need to know how to better serve those students, and we're all working together, and I think that we truly are school. And I will leave it with that. Thank you.
Just a question.
I'm sorry.
More of a marketing piece.
Okay.
That the-
Oh, the Fox thing?
The before-school program includes breakfast.
Yes.
Just for those that are listening.
Before school includes breakfast.
Yep.
We try to do hot, another learning curve with schools and being able to use some of their stuff, right? So we try to do always hot, but cereal is always a backup. And in the afternoon, always a snack before we work on homework, and then after homework, everything else gets done.
And as I said, I think it's a great program for the two towns. And I know we started this initiative pre-pandemic, and then all, everything went awry. I'd like to see us come back to a combined budgeting process about how we can reinvest back into the program, right? So we've talked about what you bring in for revenue. How can we turn that back into from a growth perspective, what have you? So I really like to have this brought back to the overall budgeting process, because I think this will allow us to sit there and say, hey, listen, we need space at FES, right? You know, how do we-
We need to build a Renanix.
You don't want me building anything, so. I'm just saying that that will allow us, and I think it helps us to say, hey, this is something that we need to reinvest in that aspect of it. So that's an ongoing support thing that I think we need to bring back.
And I will follow up with that. I think that my first meeting with the superintendent, he said it might not be needed, but if you want to be monthly or every other month, it would be important to bring up some of the things that we can do together. And he has included Kara on that, and I think that we have, the discussion has already started about, we talked about the wood chips that I provided for eighth grade. So we talked about things that we can do, that we use, that we can combine the resources and buy those things at the end of the year, after everything is paid for.
Yeah.
I can add one thing. Lisa and I had a conversation today, and again, the work that is done, I continue to get accolades for the work that you do, so we, appreciating it is not, is a bit trite, in my opinion. We need stronger words. But Lisa and I talked a little bit, and we worked with IT, and we are now providing Chromebooks for after school, so that kids can do their homework, which I don't think you had previously. So we found a way to manage, there will be Chromebooks at each, each of the two schools for our third graders, mostly our third graders who are using them, but second graders, first graders. So we are, this conversation is about how can we collaborate and help Lisa with her program.
Anything else?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Continuation, the community rec program?
Good evening. So regarding the campus programs, it's a little different, because I consider our program is not a need, but it's a nice-to-have. As far as, we don't offer daycare, but we do offer other programs that help our students and find new things. So over the summer, we had, we have six weeks to do different sports camps from July 11th to August 18th, and we're outside, and it's hot, and it's 90 degrees out. And the people and the parents ask us, you know, what are we going to do? And we make it work. But we still run a field hockey camp, strength and conditioning camp. We ran it in July and August, tennis camp. We had a little boy that was really shy. He didn't know what to do. He wasn't sure if he wanted to try it out. The volunteers that we had made him feel comfortable. They said, come on, you're going to have fun. The end of the week, he had fun. He made new friends. He can't wait to come back again next year. And this was all because of our volunteers that are also part of the tennis team, and they come back, and they want to help these students out and show their passion for them. The track camp, we also had, and then volleyball camp. We had 14 of our athletes at the volleyball camp, helping out. They literally had one-on-one time. It was amazing. So out of the 122 participants, 22 of our athletes, our current Pondequid High School athletes volunteer, which is a total of 108 volunteered hours. We couldn't run these programs without them. We also run programs at the middle school with Mr. Perron, Mr. Barrington, and Mr. Gallagher. Again, we had 168 participants, and we had volunteers also. The campus programs here at the intermediate school, we have Mr. Lestrange. He's our sports intermeals coach. He runs anywhere between flag football, handball, dodgeball, and soccer. And then we actually also have not only national honor society students from Pondequid, but we also have middle school, national junior honor society students that have taken these programs with Mr. Lestrange, and now they're coming back, and they want to help. And it makes it so easy, because they just walked from middle school, they walked from the- And it makes it so easy because they just walk from middle school, they walk from the high school and they help him. So we had over 120 volunteer hours with that. In addition to sports programs, we also have our storytelling program with Mrs. Chase. She's been doing this for 21 years. Last year, we finally got to have a festival in person at intermediate school. We have 24 participants. And this program, the students, they start stories from the folk tale collection. They learn about different cultures and they gain confidence in public speaking. Then she also does this once upon a generation with our council on aging. Our senior citizens get together with our storytellers that took this in the intermediate school. And now we have a middle school and high school students and they share their stories of our senior citizens. And then the past couple of years, because of the pandemic, it was on Zoom. But last year they were available, they did go to the Lakeville Library and the Free Town Historical Society. And it's a wonderful bonding experience. And they've been doing this for years. Some of our programs that we are coming back will be Beth Olson. She does home alone classes and babysitting. And we will have adult curl volleyball starting in December. Another part of campus programs is our facility use that the community, they use a building use form and they rent out our buildings. So whether we have the baseball youth organizations, basketball, we have dance recitals. We have four of them this year in the summer. We also have Pan Mass Challenge. People don't realize that we are a rest stop for them. It happens every August, every year. And we have 6,300 riders come through and they've tried to raise 64 million. And I want to thank Charlotte and George for being there because they were here also in 95 degree weather, planning up after them, after 6,300 riders. It's pretty amazing. We also have other organizations that have reached out to us. We have the Miss Free Town and Miss Lakeville Scholarship Pageant. It was going to be held in October, but they changed it. It's now in February. We also have a nonprofit organization that asked if they could have a craft fair in Free Town Auditorium, Free Town Normality. And another school has asked if they can also use the middle school auditorium for their drama club. Also, we have the pool. In the summer, we have the Kids Cafe. As we know, we have a lot of swimmers, almost 3,000 swimmers this year. We ran it from Monday through Thursday from 12 to 4:30. We also have the South Coast Collaborative and the ESY program, they used it on Mondays, Tuesdays and Wednesdays in the morning. We have a coach, Sarah White. She handles all the swim intramurals now. And last year was the beginning of, they weren't too sure about what we were going to do with swimming. But we started the November preseason swim. And then we also had the swim intramurals for the winter, the March and in May. She's an upon a quit graduate student. She's also a teacher at a different district. And for open swim, last year we had it on Mondays and Wednesdays. And we had maybe one or two people show up on one day and one, one or two people show up again another day. So we're going to try it again this year. We're going to have it on Fridays from six to eight and that's going to start on October 7th. We also have South Coast Collaborative and they do rent our pool all year long. And our school asked if they could rent our pool last year during the winter. And they are asked again if they can do it this year. As we know, there's a lifeguard shortage and we had a very difficult time in hiring lifeguards this year. But we were still able to run the Kids Cafe, open swim and the swim intramurals. And just to compare the budgets that we had from FY21, which was during the pandemic, we don't even want to look at that, but we are doing really well. And thank you to Extended Day for always contributing. And so we had a profit last year that we contributed back to the school. Are there any questions?
I have one. I understand there was a lifeguard shortage everywhere, but one of the things that I thought would have been neat with the major heat waves we had, if we could have had just thrown it out there, hey, the pool's open, come on down, cool off after work or after school or whatever.
Well, that's the problem. The district did ask, since Kids Cafe is there till 5:30, that we closed all buildings in the summer by 5:30. So I really couldn't have an open swim and have people, you work all day, you want to come and swim at night. I actually had lifeguards that do work full time in hospitals and they could be able to make it from six to eight, but the building was closed by 5:30.
And the rationale for that, I mean, I don't, if you have a heat wave, can't you keep the building open a couple of hours so people can swim?
Of course.
Yeah. I think for next year, we could just think about it.
I think it was more for scheduling for custodial and cleaning and coverage like that. I was just asked if I could not, you know, not do that and.
Okay.
I think part of that is we used to run, and I know with pandemic, is a lifeguard class.
Yes.
I think if we bring that back, that'll hopefully bring.
Yeah, I've actually reached out to TJ, but he is also a full-time police officer. So he's.
You had said in the beginning, this is a little bit nice to have, but I think more so this year than any other year. This is a need because it brings a social environment that these kids have not had for a couple of years. So.
To be outside and meet new friends and planning.
It's a great thing. I hope we continue it. It allows older kids a volunteer opportunity, allows them jobs with Kids Cafe type thing. So I hope we can continue that process. Cause I, I think there's a lifeguard piece, but I think these communities really enjoy the swim lessons, especially the new kids. So hopefully we can bring that back as well.
Yep.
Will?
Yeah, thank you so much for this. This was a, a great kind of snapshot as far as the, the work that you do. Question for you, I guess. Has there been any thought or discussions maybe around kind of having the summer sports camps kind of for elementary age students as well? Because as we know, as a district, right? It's super important to be able to have feeder systems to, to be able to come up and, and kind of supplement what the middle school is doing and high school doing. Has there been any, any talks around trying to extend that down to elementary schools?
We haven't really been asked to do the younger grades. I just feel like with Kids Cafe and there are so many, like for, you know, K through three, we've always based our summer camps just for the older students. But I don't think, that, that wouldn't be a problem. I just would have to do it on a different, like if, let's say if I have tennis the week of August, whatever, 26th, I couldn't have it the same week just because if I'm having a seventh, eighth and ninth grader, the skill set's going to be a little different. And a first grader could not be out for three hours a day in the heat. You know, it would have to be a different type of teaching them. But I definitely could get the staff and maybe separate that, do like a K through four and then a five through eight type thing.
Yeah, I mean, however, however logistically you want to do it. I, I think there's probably an opportunity out there to get kids active and involved, right? So that'd be great. And as far as the pool goes too, and I think this is probably for the, for the district as a whole, start thinking about, right? Is how can we market our pool a lot better? You know, I, I think given the, the superintendent's kind of taken a, a big step in the 21st century here with social media, right? And being able to kind of promote what we have here, especially the pool, would be huge. I, I think that'd go a long way in letting the public know what we do and, and kind of celebrating the work that we do. So we'd certainly love to, to see that as well.
Actually, I think a few years ago with Steve, right? About when the pool was redone, we had like an open house and we had a huge event and a lot of people came to that. So we could do something like that.
I think part of the challenges is in the school, right? So based upon how the pool is constructed today, you cannot use it during the day.
It's inaccessible.
Right? And, and I think this would be a huge asset to our senior citizens, right? From a standpoint during that timeframe. But we would have to figure out how do we close down that divider, which we do have in place there, and then the locker room pieces, right? But I think there's an opportunity to do that while providing that separation. The other big challenge is that the pool is used quite a bit after school. The, the, they do that, the swim team has it, we rent it out to the swim team. So I think there are ways that we can market. I think we just have to be creative in the scheduling piece to it.
And my last point is, again, I, I think it's important that, I mean, these two individuals do a tremendous amount of work, right? And it's, it's important to let the public know too, that their positions aren't funded from our, our district budget, right? So we always want them doing more, right? The more that they do, the more opportunities for our community to, to access our fields, our facilities and everything else, right? I, I think as a committee and maybe a task for everyone here is to kind of look up maybe a, a different way of compensating folks and if they do more, right? Maybe something like, it would come out of the business world as far as like base plus, like a variable based on revenue brought to the district, right? Something like that to really kind of push folks to, to want to think outside the box, do more and go that route. Because I think the, the folks that are doing more should, should certainly be compensated for it, right? And, and that should be celebrated. So just something to think about here in the future as we move forward. Something worth thinking about.
I agree.
I just have one question for you. And again, thank you for all, all the programs that you run. Has there been a conversation on opening up the, the drama program again?
Actually, Carol Conrad reached out to me this year. She did retire. So yes, I would probably have to ask if someone's like maybe a drama teacher or someone from high school would want to reach out and do something like that. Cause it, we did do from K through eight and it was a great, great, I mean, she did it for 25 years. I actually cried when she emailed me because she's retired. But yes, I would like to bring that back too.
Thank you.
Right before the pandemic started, we were going to do a summer drama camp and we were all ready to go. Like I had a person that had graduated from here that was going to come back and had several, several onstage people, actresses that were going to come back and do the whole thing. But pandemic hit and like it was a go, but it's not a go. So it might be something that we look forward to. Cause I think a summer camp, a summer drama camp is so, like kids do that all the time. So I think it would be awesome.
Yes, thank you. And I want to continue with what Will is saying. I agree with everything that Will is saying as far as the summer program. How about a campus program for the elementary kids in the fall and the spring? Some sort of sports program after school where they could stay a day or two a week?
I would just have to get more staff. I just, right now, I'm, like we're located here in the campus and most, like with all the volunteers that come now from the middle school and the high school, none of them have cars, they just walk over. So the volunteers actually help our programs a lot. But I could reach out to the Free Town Elementary and ask if I could ask to do some kind of sports. But I'd have to have staff there and it would be hard to get volunteers there.
Right, you might even be able to find parents who are willing to volunteer if their son was involved.
Yeah.
And staff members from one of the elementary, from the elementary schools.
And they could do some kind of.
Kind of like Kids Cafe, but this would be a kids sports camp.
Yep.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you both. And Ms. Pacheco, if you ever looking for resources on a summer drama camp? I am by far not that person, but there is a.
Oh, I'd like to volunteer.
I'm saving the program by not offering my resources. But there is a talented individual in our miss who is a very talented testee and I'm sure would welcome the opportunity to volunteer.
Anytime, Jeremy Young, I don't know if everybody remembers, Stefan Young's son, who is at another school district. He did volunteer and I had a couple of others that volunteered. So I'm hoping that we see something like that. It'd be kind of awesome to have an outside theater program. But anyway, am I dismissed?
You're more than welcome to stay.
As much as I love it, I am so not missing it.
Thank you very much. All right, moving on to number eight on the budget, on the budget, on the agenda, old business, FY22 budget report.
Yes, included in your packet is the general fund overview for FY22 year-to-date budget versus actual. It shows an estimated E and D balance of $2,019,403.38. On a year-to-date basis, we have an estimated addition of $162,000 to E and D. In accordance with the mass regs, school districts may retain 5% of its proposed next year's budget, leaving us with an allowable cap of $2,117,035. The E and D projection includes funding deficits for the athletic user fund of $63,000, which is the standard deficit typically pre-pandemic that our district would have normally been funding. We also had an additional add-back of $250,000 from the regional transportation fund, where in 2021, this amount was set aside to cover approximately $80,000 of additional expenditures for transportation. That was the one additional bus that we added last year around this time. Those deposits legally can be set aside for one year only until they are remitted back into E and D, into the operating fund. Additionally, $184,347 was added back into the E and D estimate. That was the amount that was voted to support the FY22 budget, where the DOR required us to reduce that in our prior year certified E and D. This year it is reversed and instead it's our actual revenues and expenditures that come into the computation. Our E and D estimate is subject to final certification, which we expect will be submitted to the DOR, Department of Revenue, no later than October 31st. We have started the process with our auditors where they assist, they help us with the necessary worksheets where we begin the official E and D certification process. Overall, the operating fund appears to be in great financial position. That summarizes my FY22 report and I'd be happy to take any questions.
Just a question on the additions. Are any of those coming from revolving funds or no?
So if I may, just peek at these really quick. So the transportation fund is considered in this case to be a revolving fund. So that would be one piece. The school extended programs like campus programs, for example, that's a revolving fund. But those are required, those fund balances are required to be carried forward to the next fiscal year. So those are not included in our E and D balance.
Okay.
Those are retained in that fund. And same with school lunch, we are required to maintain those fund balances in those funds in accordance with the mass general laws. But one thing to note, and this kind of goes back to Steve's comment earlier, is that we are allowed to fund capital items out of these programs that have an indirect or direct type relationship. So we'd be looking during budget planning to make those sort of associations going forward.
Good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions on FY22? All right, now moving on to 8B, FY23 budget.
For the FY23 year-to-date budget report versus actual results they have presented, as well as an updated assessment sheet. The revenues and expenditures presented are consistent with the beginning of a normal fiscal or school year at this time. As far as the assessments for the towns, we have provided to both towns an updated assessment sheet as a result of our August 24th school committee vote, where assessments were reduced by $121,533. So both towns have received an official revised assessment filling. The assessment sheet provided in the packet that you have reflects these updates as well. We will continue to watch our spending as the year progresses, especially as we continue to navigate through some inflationary pressures from the economy. And that concludes my FY23 at this time.
Any questions on FY23 budget? Just one piece there. I know that we're pushing here a little bit, but in two meetings, this body is supposed to present to the administration our recommendation on FY24 budget. So although we just felt like we completed this process, we have to kick the start again. So I think we need to start thinking about what is the direction of what we need to think about. Inflation is a big concern, right? And, and how do we budget that or what have you? So I'd be curious and what the towns approach as far as what they're doing. Because obviously inflation is going to impact what we're doing on a regular basis as well. Thank you. Moving on to new business, we've already talked about school opening week is, right? So we're good there?
Yeah.
Okay. 9B, ARHS Deco field trip requests.
So Deco, we, we know the incredible work that they do. Has asked to go back to the Power Trip Conference. This year it is in Washington DC. Last year it was convenient in Boston. They, they are very aware of all the health and safety concerns. There really are none, all restrictions have been pulled, which is a good thing. So we are asking for approval for, for Deco to be able to.
We'll approve second. Any questions?
No, good for them.
Yeah, great.
I'm glad that you didn't mention that, Mr. Strauss. If we all remember the problem that we had with Deco last year. I did write to Ms. Cronin and the two people, Mr. Rosa, who had, who are requesting this with a C C for transparency to Alan to ensure that every, everything down in Washington DC is going to be open for. that every, everything down in Washington DC is going to be open for it as of today, obviously. So just so that we don't have to cover that bridge again, because that was a tough one last year. But we, but we won.
I know this is unrelated, but is this flight, bus? What's the transportation we're doing here?
It's usually bus.
It is bus. As far as I know, nothing has changed in that direction.
Okay. We, we had a motion and a second. Any, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? You should just leave now because of...
The F B A costs at 5:30. It certainly, it's not flights.
The motion is unanimous. Uh, reports to the committee, 10A, back to you, Ms. Lees.
For the MSBA, you'll see in your packet that the MSBA has now officially approved the schematic design during their meeting held on August 31st. Additionally, on August 29th, the project details were shared with the Town of Lakeville's Board of Selectmen by the designer, by our designer and owner's project manager for the ASO MOC project. Next steps will include town meeting funding approval, where the full $4.22 million project will be requested for approval. Although the grant reimbursement rate is 53.53%, which will cover approximately $2.26 million, and the town would then be responsible for funding $1.96 million, the town is still required under MSBA guidelines to vote to approve a project budget of the entire $4.22 million. The town administrator, Ari Sky, and I have already started working with the project manager and the designer on the expectations of the draft materials and presentation requirements for the town meeting. And the town meeting is, um, going to be held on November 14th, um, 2022. Um, additionally in the packet, um, is a reference to a legislative update. As referenced in the packet, Bill 596 was enacted by the governor on August 26, 2022. Um, and just so you know, um, it was enacted on August 26th, but the bill goes into effect 90 days after signature. This bill provides for two significant changes. The first impacts sealed bidding thresholds under Mass General Law Chapter 30B, and the second impacts the verbiage in the regional transportation fund. As it relates to the sealed bidding thresholds, currently our district's policy is to require a bidding process when costs are anticipated to be greater than $25,000. At one time, this $25,000 threshold mirrored Mass General Law Chapter 30B, state bidding requirements. In November 2016, Chapter 30B was updated for the threshold statewide to be $50,000. Our district's policy was not updated to mirror this at this time, at that time, as the district is allowed to maintain a lower threshold. And recently in Bill 596 enacted this August, the bidding threshold was once again raised, um, to $100,000. Now, Mass General Law Chapter 30B would still require quotes from $10,000 to $100,000, but the bidding threshold is now 100,000. Our current district policy, referenced in section DJE, states that all purchases in materials and equipment in amounts exceeding $25,000 will be based on competitive bidding. I did look at the MASC policy. As of today, their policy does not yet reflect the new Mass General Law Chapter 30B change to $100,000. It does, um, currently speak to the $50,000. My assumption is that MASC is working on this. Um, but with that, I am recommending, um, that our policy committee consider a policy change to raise the threshold for Freetown Lakeville Regional School District to either $50,000 or $100,000. Raising the threshold will provide the district with purchasing efficiencies. There is a significant effort required for bidding processes, and many more items are being impacted as prices are rising due to inflation and price changes due to shortages and other market conditions. Additionally, raising the threshold would provide more ease for spending as it relates to ESER or other federal grants. Although the federal threshold for bidding is $250,000, we still have to use the lower of all of our thresholds as a district-wide policy. So currently, we are still held to the $25,000 threshold. Um, so competitive bidding, um, just helps buyers get the best price and contract terms for their proposals. It allows us to get the most qualified sellers of products and services while keeping costs low. And additionally, as it relates to bidding and procurement, just one thing to note, I've been asked to join a food service working group with the DESI, um, being one out of six business managers invited statewide to create a required procurement template to be utilized by all school districts statewide. I'm honored to be part of this group and will be proud to represent Freetown Lakeville School Districts in this endeavor. The working group will add to many efficiencies while going out to rebid every few years for our lunch providers and will reduce the risk of non-compliance with the school lunch program. And then in the House bill, the other updates relate to school transportation reimbursement fund, where the language has been modified that reimbursements can be set aside and expended by school committee for purposes of transportation without further appropriation. The language was really loosened a bit from the prior language. And then lastly, I've included, um, just some estimated fund balances for some of our key district funds to include school choice, circuit breaker, school lunch, and community recreation.
Does anybody have any questions?
The, the policy committee needs to examine the, um, the, the new threshold, right?
Well, I guess, because they have the policy here, right?
Yeah.
But the policy doesn't...
That's the MASC.
The MASC.
That's the MASC current language, not our current policy.
Yep.
Right.
Oh, okay. So this is... Okay, got it. Because this doesn't even have a number.
No, there's no number.
Okay. Uh, so, so first and foremost, any policy change requires multiple meetings to go through that. So, um, from a policy committee, and I'm looking at this general vicinity here, do you want to have a discussion and then come back to us at the next meeting for our second meeting as far as what we propose?
Yes.
Okay.
But just a clarification, you said 50, raising the threshold to 50, to 50 or 100,000?
Yeah, that's what you said.
I would say 50 or 100. Um, so...
Do you have a preference?
I would prefer the 100, but...
Then we can...
But I, I also want to...
Yeah.
Okay.
Looking at this, I think we could...
I do. I just wanted to know your preference.
I'd like to come up with one number, not or reference.
Well, she was trying to give options.
Yeah.
I am trying to give options to consider. I do feel that, you know, during the policy review committee time, we could discuss the...
So we will...
Yeah, and I just want to clarify that or...
Right.
And then again, congratulations. I think one of six across the Commonwealth is a tribute to the work you're doing. So that's, that's great news.
Thank you so much.
So for that, uh, at the next meeting, can we add to the agenda the second reading for this particular policy piece? We can go through that. Um, before I go through my questions, does anybody else have any questions for Kara? Okay. Um, is this project at ASO MOC windows and doors?
That is correct.
Just purely to check the boxes here, is the fire chief involved in this evaluation to make sure the doors are compliant?
Yes. So one of the steps that we had with MSBA, um, is that we met with, um, the public safety officials of Lakeville, building commissioner, police and fire.
Excellent. Um, great news on the approval of that. And I think it just shows the collaboration between the district and the town and then hope this is more opportunity for that. Um, on the, um, the fund balances that we have here, um, the, what is the health C S H S workforce investment?
Yes. So due to the coronavirus, and sorry to use that word publicly at this, at these times, um, due to the COVID-19 issue, um, we had an opportunity to apply for a $200,000 grant over a two-year period, and it related to nursing support.
Okay.
And that's, so we have an $84,000 balance unused from the prior year. We're allowed to roll it over into this year. We had special approval for that and we're going to be receiving the opportunity for another $100,000. This would have covered any, um, as nurses were, were working through their regular workday on their normal tasks, but then having to deal with the vaccine and the testing and all of that, this fund was really to support those kinds of services. I could see that it's possible that we may not meet the compliance requirements of, of using these funds and that the state may hopefully repurpose them for other nursing support type activities.
Got it. Okay. Um, the technology revolving fund, is that primarily the insurance?
That is correct.
Okay.
That is correct.
And, um, I'm sure part of our technology plan is how we utilize those funds on an annual basis?
That is correct. So, um, last year, we were able to get through the whole year, um, with capturing the deposits without utilizing any expenditures. Um, but there is a plan, um, at least when I did my Chromebook replacement plan for last year's budget, I was trying to estimate how much this fund would build up in the next five to 10 years, we'll just say, and how it fits into the Chromebook replacements.
Got it.
And next month, during the IT plan, which we're talking about, that will be discussed.
Okay. Uh, the school lunch, that seems high.
It is high. So when, last year, when we were able to qualify for free lunch for all, uh, we received much more money from the federal government by running the program than what we would have in normal s- school lunch operating times. Um, so I'm anticipating that our balance, um, will run a bit high as well this year because we're continuing that. Uh, but then as we phase back into normal operations, um, once that free lunch is over, um, I do think we'll see the balances start to come down. But this is an excellent opportunity for us to be able to replace some equipment. Um, instead of having to utilize other grants, we can do it, do, do it through, directly through the school lunch fund.
We had refrigeration.
So hopefully we don't have to hear about any broken heat lamps, stove refrigerators.
We had refrigeration go in FES and, and we were able to replace immediately with that.
Yeah.
And on the flip side, circuit breaker looks low.
So circuit breaker, um...
And I'm, I'm being facetious because I'd like to see that much higher than it is because of the fact of...
Yes.
You never know. So...
So this circuit breaker is really last year's deposits that we're all allowed to keep into fund balance. So we're gonna, we're going to have this fund balance plus our current year deposits come into the fund.
And then, sorry for all the questions, but school choice, what is the amount that we have to utilize with the FY24 budget?
Technically, it's $0.00. We budgeted for about $380,000 to come into the fund and out of the fund. Um, currently how it's looking is that we'll have 380 come into the fund and about 480 come out. That's assuming we don't have any vacancies in other areas in the operating budget where I can shift it back. Um, so I do think that we're going to be looking at a relatively high school choice fund balance, uh, potentially at the end of the year as well.
Hmm.
Which can be used for instructional expenditure.
Food for thought. Okay. Any other questions? Okay, team done. Go on to Ms. Fleming, curriculum.
Good evening. Um, so just an update on programming. The Wonders backorder materials have almost all arrived and they should be fully here by the end of October. And, um, so that was good news because originally it wasn't until, some of the dates were January on shipping and so forth. So, um, the materials and backorder really hit us on, on our order on that, um, program materials. I wanted to let everyone know that STEM Week is around the corner, October 17th to 22nd. All of the buildings are actively building some wonderful things for the students to be doing to get them into the engineering mindset. And so I'll have that together for you and have what days and what times and what buildings are putting events together. And it would be lovely if you have the time and availability to stop by and visit some of our young engineers. I can give you some examples. Um, FES is doing a, a sailboat challenge. And so Thursday and Friday will be the day they're testing and revising their designs and, uh, getting, getting their sailboats afloat. Uh, and the middle school is doing a zoo, a zoo makeover. And so they're incorporating some math and some science and some engineering into that, uh, design as well. And that's through the Wade's Institute. Then we have some speakers already lined up for careers, uh, for the high school. And, um, it's just been really exciting to work with all of our teachers on some ideas and, and putting some resources out there to them and then them taking off with it and going, what do you think of this? Stephanie St. Ange sent me this, like, great PowerPoint that she built out of a conversation that we had. Um, so it's coming together and I'll be excited to share that invitation and that timeline with you as it gets closer. Uh, the bullet points there, the grant has, uh, as of when I submitted this, it had not been finally approved. We submitted our title grant workbook on September 9th. Um, it had not been approved when I wrote this, but I'm happy to say Tuesday we got an email and it has been approved. So we are, um, ready to start spending out of our Title I, Title II, and Title IV funds. And under each of those, I just place some bullet points as to what those are earmarked for. The Early Raise Literacy Grant, the governor has signed off on it, but we are still waiting from word from the grants management to start actually spending. However, Lori Moffo is, like, ready to get into the buildings with us as we start to, to use her coaching and her, um, expertise on fluency and literacy in, in our elementary classrooms. There's a list of the training and professional development that's happening over the course of the next couple of months. I'm happy to answer questions about those. Uh, like Mr. Strauss said, early year today, we had an evaluation training. There's another one happening tomorrow at, um, ASO MOC and then, uh, tomorrow afternoon at the high school. So it's just coming along. We're having wonderful conversations around goal setting that is purposeful and meaningful and live, alive in their classrooms. So. Uh, MCAS data is released, but it's embargoed at this time. So I would love to talk numbers, but not this month. But I will make sure I have some nice, uh, spreadsheet data drawings for you next month. The parent and guardian reports are anticipated to be received by the end of September, but the district and school report cards will not be available to the public until late December. The, the parents will have their individual scores in October.
Any questions from Fleming?
No, I'll be interested to see the MCAS data because from what I have seen, all the things the state did, oh, this doesn't count. Don't worry about it. It, it's reflecting in school, in scores. And, um, even, I know they're embargoed, but I've been dealing with another district on something else. And I know that it doesn't count didn't work out well.
Okay.
So just saying. Interesting to see.
Right. Um, a few questions for me. Um, it is going to be important as we come into the budget season that any of these programs that have been typically funded by any of these grants, that we now need to fund it to the operational budget, that we want to make sure that that is clear, right? So we always run into those. So if there are any of these major items that come in through, I'd like to make sure we highlight it at this meeting or as part of the budget process because that's, that's part of the whole communications with the towns as well, right? So it's, it's increasing because we're getting less funding from these grant aspects of it. Um, I'm happy to see we're bringing back curriculum family nights. Those have been a huge hit, especially at the elementary schools. So, uh, great to do that. Um, and then, um, MCAS coming up. I'd like to make a request. Um, and others can share, but, um, what I'm looking for is not to be told the data, but looking at historically what we can infer and what we can do better. Okay? We can all look at PowerPoints and data and aspects of it. You guys are the experts. Hey, looking into this, what can we do? Um, I'll give you, for an example, you know, last year we looked at, if you look at historically, our math numbers were going in the opposite direction, but we didn't have the supports for the math, you know, whether they're coaches, specialists, or what had, right? So that's what I'm looking for in that, taking your expertise and your lens of looking at the data. We all can go to the DESI website and see it, you know, that type of thing. But what is it that, hey, when we're looking at that, what's behind the numbers and what can we do better? Because that's going to come out of the budgeting process too. Okay?
So, the only thing I want to add to that is that's part of the reason we need a three year school improvement plan. It, it's the only way we're really going to be able to move forward. If Jean is correct, and I have enough friends around and I know what's happening, we've looked at, at things. Um, and I'm certainly not saying that we're in dire straits. That, that's not my point. But there certainly are going to be pockets of, of places we need to improve. You cannot do that in one-year plan. So we've already started talking about that. That's been part of our, um, we want to give data, um, as a sidebar to what are we going to do with this? That's more important to us.
And again, I don't care how we did to Foxborough or Wilbury, Air, or what have you, right? This is our piece. And I, I don't want to speak for the entire committee, but I, that's what I'd like to see, uh, the, the MCAS data presentation as you put that together.
Right. And as we all know, the MCAS data is just the very tip of the assessment iceberg.
Agreed, agreed, yeah.
And I'd never like to use it as the end-all be-all, even though we all tend to have to look at that regularly as our measuring tool. Um, it is more important that we're really building those formative assessments in the classrooms. And those are the conversations that we're having right now in, in our buildings and teachers are very excited about.
Does that pertain also to the increased, um, standards that are going to be in place? Does that pertain also to the increased standards that are going to be in place?
Yes. So, yeah. And that's happening in multiple, if, like, world language and civics and art are all, and all have new standards that we're under. That's a three-year rollout process for implementing standards. We're right on target for with what we've done so far, and so we're going to continue to look at that.
Any, anything else for Ms. Fleming? The only other two things I'd like to add potentially at the next meeting is, are we seeing an uptick in ELL and any of the requirements for that, or is that pretty status quo as we're coming out of this?
So quantify an uptick in terms of number of students?
The number of students, the services we have to provide for, those type of thing. I know we had a presentation a couple of years ago, and the type of languages and outside services we need to bring in. Just, just something that we can add color to that aspect of, not now, but at a future meeting there.
Absolutely.
And we are in the process of screening students right now, so yes, the numbers have changed.
Perfect. Okay. Not perfect that they changed, but great that we have that. And then, at the end of the summer, we were presented these, I would call them large monitors, but it's a different name.
Premature.
Yeah, thank you.
So they have started to be brought in. Fifteen are arriving to the high school today, tomorrow.
That's right.
They have been brought into primary schools. IT is working diligently on it.
Perfect. Okay. I will call them by the correct name.
Doors.
From now on, instead of the large gaming monitor.
Large gaming.
Not what they are.
And last but not least, student services.
I know. My goodness, I feel like I have so much to cover, but in looking at the clock, I will try to wrap things up as quickly as possible. So as Alan and Terry have said, it's kicked off a great year. We've been in the buildings, we've been visible, we've been meeting with staff, administrators, meeting kids. I, for one, did bus duty at FES last Thursday and had a blast. I met a lot of new friends, watched the buses roll in and helped with all that, so that was great. We do have two special guests tonight that will be joining us for school committee meetings throughout the rest of the year. So I'd like to invite up Melissa McKenna and Jessica Allerhead. They are our co-chairs for our CPAC, Special Education Parent Advisory Council, and they're going to share some information with you all, as well as everybody watching, about what CPAC has to offer this year and what's coming up.
Hi, I'm Melissa. This is Jessica, which you guys all pretty much know. But we just wanted to start off by thanking, like, you particularly, Ashley and Alan, for being so welcoming, and then the school committee as well. Like, you guys have really, I've seen some of you at the meetings, the early meeting we have this year, and just a lot more engagement and support. And, you know, we just really appreciate that because it's not always been the case. So we know the experience of our children will be better supported because of the collaboration between all of us, so. And just, we kind of want to talk about what CPAC is, in case some people aren't aware, because I know I post in a lot of different Facebook groups, and I don't know if everybody really knows what CPAC is, but it's the Special Education Parent Advisory Council. We host some workshops, we bring speakers in, we do activities, and basically help advise parents in the district on matters related to special education. We're always open to parents who don't have children in special education, maybe you're a friend, or you have, you know, another child in your life, or you just want to be supportive, you're welcome to come to the meetings. And we're just a group of parent volunteers, and we're always looking for new parents, especially elementary educate, elementary age parents, because we really, basically have high school and a couple of middle school parents. So we need, you know, fresh blood in here. Yeah, so. But our first meeting will take place Tuesday, October 4th, at 6:30, right here in the library at Aponequit. We're also, as mentioned, going to be at the first unified basketball game, and we're going to have a meeting in November as well, 15th of November, on Tuesday. Usually it's Tuesday at 6:30 unless we have a presenter who can't make that time or day, we try to work with them. But basically, we meet here, and the first meeting is going to be Parents' Rights and Responsibilities, and Ashley will be doing that presentation. November, we want to kind of expand more on IEPs and 504s and how, like, all of that works, how your kid would possibly be evaluated, the process and all that stuff to help parents understand. And, you know, if your child's in the reading support, or if they're in sub-separate or anything, that's what we're here for. I think there's a lot of parents who have children who have, maybe, get a little support in class and maybe don't think that they would benefit from these meetings, but you absolutely would. I know I came in with, like, very little understanding and knowledge, and really it's just helped so much and helped my, my kid so much. So we're going to meet most months this year. We're going to skip December because we know it's crazy for everybody. And we're going to get more detailed information about our meetings that are coming up as well. And I put that all on our Facebook group, which, if you just look on Facebook for Free Town League for CPAC, you'll see us, or I post on the district page, or the unofficial district page, as much as possible, basically. But you can always email us at cpac@freelake.org if you have any questions, or find us on Facebook. And we're in that group, like I said, but we're also both in that district unofficial group as well. But we're just really hoping to get some more parents involved. We have a nice group and a lot of different experiences, and we can really help a lot of people and, you know, work together, so.
Did you bring lollipops to that first meeting? Somebody did.
We always bring candy.
Right. Well, you should have said that.
Jolly Ranchers, we will bring candy to every meeting, we promise.
I think I walked out of there with two lollipops.
Yeah, she left with only lollipops. We do like snacks, but we try to keep things mostly casual, but we do have, you know, some things that we, we do have to do every year. But I think we have a good time. We also try to do, like, parent nights out where we all can get together, have, like, dinner and just be adults. But, you know, we want more people, more ideas to come in, and I kind of, it would be nice to know where, and you can probably help us with this, too, Ashley, where last year we did a heavy focus on transitioning age kids and, you know, from 14 and above, really, to try to get parents on the right track early with that. But maybe more elementary to middle school, different topics we could have and speakers we could have, because I feel like that's, again, missed opportunity, and I have two high schoolers, so I'm not really sure what's happening at that age. So anybody who has younger kids, please come to the meetings.
Yeah, we're getting too old.
Yeah.
I'm a middle schooler, so we're getting.
We're aging out.
We're getting close to aging out. It's closer than it appears, so.
But thank you guys so much for having us. We'll definitely be back. I would say, we'll probably try to come to a few meetings, but definitely mid-year to kind of share out what we've been doing and what we have coming up.
Beautiful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. So again, I think the biggest thing that, you know, we want to take away from CPAC is even though it's called the Special Ed Parent Advisory Council, it is open to all parents, and it's a great resource and support group. If parents have concerns about what's going on in school, or if they have concerns about their child or family friend, it's just a great place to go and get some resources and then find who you can connect with in the district that might help you to navigate the ropes of, you know, the special ed eligibility process or even the 504 route. So I'm going to skip around a little bit. I'll talk a little bit about the special ed staffing update as I go through my report. You can see here that I outlined the special education population for each building, but tonight I am going to focus solely on the elementary schools, just to talk a little bit about AES and FES. But also, we'll obviously accept any questions that you all have regarding the other buildings as well. So one of the things that was brought to my attention immediately upon coming on as Director of Student Services was the need for additional support at AES. And in talking to staff and Meredith Foye, as well as Bethany Penalt, I kind of hit the brakes a little bit and said, let's see what we have for numbers going into the new year. Let me look at what we currently have for numbers and then take a look at your schedules once we hit the ground running and prepare for opening week. So one of the first things that I did was meet with the AES staff to go through their needs as there were some significant concerns vocalized immediately upon opening the building at Assawamset. And you can see here, when you do a side-by-side comparison, which may help if you have Page 1 and 2 side-by-side, looking at AES and FES, although at first glance, when you look at the total number, Assawamset has a total enrollment of 495, and FES has a total number of 426. But we have to take into account that of the 426, we have a pretty heavy pre-K population, which AES does not have. So if I take pre-K out of that number when looking at FES and we compare the two buildings, you can see, again, specifically focusing on grades 2 and 3, that AES is significantly higher, not only in special education population, but also in class size as a whole. And I know that we've talked about this. I met with Steve and Jean on September 9th to discuss these concerns, and I know Alan had touched upon this. Steve, you had said this, too, that this is not something that we are going to look at as a solution just for this year, but we need to look at the bigger picture and how this is going to impact moving forward. I mean, just second and third grade alone at AES has a special ed population of 55 students. And while that's including speech and language students, OT students, so students that might not get direct services from special education teachers, they are still students that are on IEPs that require supports. And that is split between only two liaisons at this point. So one for second grade and one for third grade, and of course, para support to help as well. But that's a lot for two inclusion teachers to have to handle, and we don't see that at any of the other buildings. So I did bring that information forward to Steve and Jean, who I know shared with the rest of you as school committee members, and I am so pleased that we were able to post for an additional special education teacher, which you can also see, too, when you're comparing special education staff side-by-side. Although there are programs, more programs at FES, if we still look at the delivery for inclusion services, we were still down a teacher, but higher a number at AES. So I do think that this is a wonderful next step, but again, the start of a very big conversation moving forward as these kids are getting ready to graduate from the elementary level and move on to grades. Any questions specifically on the elementary numbers or any of the upper grade levels in regards to special ed populations?
No, I, I think that it's important, the only thing I would just reiterate is, this committee has made a very strategic investment in those grade level paras. And I just want to make sure that we continue to delineate between those two, right? So what I don't want to get into is bar Peter to pay Paul, right? And that's, I think, the open conversation where things are happening and what we can do to support that. And I think that was just a great start of that conversation. I just like that to continue and make sure that we do have those separated, because the grade level paras are also very important to the overall educational piece.
Yep. And I think that not just at AES and FES, but we also have to start that conversation with grades, because they only have two grade level paras, but a very high number of sections of classes that require interventions with general ed students, even if you take special ed out of the conversation. So again, conversations that will be ongoing with all of us in, in full transparency. And speaking of full transparency, in, in the addition of the special education teacher at AES, we do have some vacancies that are still open right now. We did have a resignation of a paraprofessional at FES, so we're working on filling that position, which was a para in one of our substantially separate classrooms. And then two others that I did not have included on my report, which was my mistake, we still have an open vacancy at the high school for a paraprofessional, as well is a leave of absence that was recently approved for a para at FLMS. So we are actively looking for para support and encourage people to apply. And then while we have those para vacancies, we also have a special education teacher position that we have handled and divided and conquered, if you will, at FES for our program, because we were not be able, we were not successful in finding a body for, during the summer months for that position. So we do still have that open, and we are still actively looking for a early elementary, substantially separate program teacher. So just to get that out there in case anybody knows anyone or can share that information with friends or family. I'm going to move on to Page 4, which goes through at the very bottom, the evaluations, because these other pages just continue to go through the special ed populations by building. So if we look at the bottom of that page, you can see the evaluations that are up and running, again, only the third week of school, so our numbers are still comparable to our numbers that were presented at the first school committee meeting. However, I do want to just break down what, how many of these evaluations are initial referrals, which means students that are not yet found eligible for special education. So of the elementary, pre-K to 3, there are 26 active referrals right now, which means that we have signed evaluation consent forms with students waiting to be tested. That's 26 already between the two buildings. Of those 26, all 26 are initial referrals. So hypothetically, worst-case scenario, 26 could be found eligible for special education. I don't think that will necessarily be the case, but we have to also think through that lens of worst-case scenario. At grades, we have seven active evaluations in process. Of those, five are initial referrals. At FLMS, we have nine total, four of which are initial referrals. And at ARH, we have five active evaluations, one of which are an initial referral. So you can see that even though we're only in September, we already have a very high volume of numbers, and as I've shared with you, either in previous conversations, one-to-one or in school committee, I do have concerns that the, the effects of COVID are still going to hit us pretty hard this year, especially at the elementary level, because we have kiddos that this is their first normal year coming to school. So at least we have three full staff working for us, so that is something to celebrate. And there will be, obviously, updates every single month that we meet on where we are with that and if there's a need for further intervention. The last part of my, well, the last page of my report just goes through our grants. We have two grants that will be coming up due October 4th, which is the 240 and 262 grants. And you can see that we do have an increase on both, which is a typical increase to what you would see annually for both grants. So that will be wonderful. And then you can see that we have three grants here, the ARP, which is the American Rescue Plan, which was similar to that of a COVID relief plan, if you will. So those were only grants that were offered for the one year, so those are not open for us any longer. But we are still reaping the benefits of, of those funds still, so that's great. Do you have a question?
I always have questions. Are any of those programs that we're continuing to do that we're funding through the operational budget?
Are any of the programs, excuse me?
The ones that we don't have grant funding for.
The ARP, he's asking.
No. So those were additional. Yep. So we use those for some transportation purposes, some supplies, so nothing that's going to hit us hard.
And on the evaluations, we are on track from a compliance standpoint of, of completing them and providing feedback. We're not behind in any of those as of yet.
No, and that was one of the areas that the Department of Ed looked at records for in preparation for their site visit in March over the summer, and we were found to be in compliance. So the only records that we were found out of compliance were, were not on the district's fault, because we had reasoning as to why the timelines weren't met, such as early intervention was not provided to us in time, or a student had excessive absences, so they weren't accessible for the evaluation. In the last piece, I just wanted to give an update on the tiered focus monitoring. So Alan, Terry, and I, along with Meredith Danielle and Jen Teberg, this morning had a meeting with the Department of Ed to prepare for our visit, which is now scheduled and confirmed for March 20th to 24th of 2023. This will include an onsite, two days onsite. One will be a records review, that they will be in central office doing our audit of our records. And then Wednesday, the 22nd, they will be in buildings and conducting interviews, which will continue to be virtual, which I think is a positive. And the good news is, is, well, I don't know if this is good news necessarily, but they're not, because of our cohort that we fall under, they're not going to be doing observations of all of the buildings and compliance of programs and services. They're only looking specifically at timeout spaces this year, which we fortunately do not have any of. We do have sensory rooms that we use, but they're not timeout spaces where students have to, you know, use to, to regulate themselves. They will end the week on the 24th with an exit meeting with Alan and myself to go through their initial findings, and then they will follow up with a report of what their, what their findings were and what the next steps were. So I did just recently share with Justin and Melissa today, actually right after the meeting, that the DESI site coordinator will be hosting a family orientation at the February CPAC meeting, which will be a virtual presentation to let parents know what to expect with this CPAC meeting, which will be a virtual presentation to let parents know what to expect with the site visit and as well as their cooperation on the completion of a special ed parent survey. So that will be taking place on February 7th at 6:30, and we will all come here in the library and then virtually connect with the members of the DESI committee. And the only last thing I have to share in addition to, which I did, I did not put on my report, so I apologize, I feel like there's always something that pops into my brain after, I did send out ESY family feedback forms, which I had shared with all of you, and I am in the process of compiling all of the input and feedback that I've gotten, so I will have a report out in October as to what their findings were, what their suggestions are, what their concerns are, and how we can move forward in planning for the 23 ESY program.
Any questions for Mr. Burke?
Excellent information, Ashley, I thank you. If you, if you already answered this, I apologize. The pending evaluations that you went through, especially the ones that would be for new students, did you say when you estimated that those would be completed?
So these are all active signed evaluation consent forms, which means that when we get a consent form signed, we have 45 school days to complete the eval. So right now, we're looking at a date of beginning of November, and this is for the evaluations that we have signed consents for. So before Thanksgiving is probably the latest, and then next month when we talk, it will obviously extend out probably until about Christmas. So right now, we're at about a November timeline for completion.
Any other questions?
Excellent, excellent report for us, a lot of good detailed information, I really liked that, thank you. I'd be remiss if we didn't do that we're ahead to add this teacher now, a new special education teacher now, I wish we had been able to do that this summer. Do we have to post that internally as well?
So it's already posted internally and is now posted publicly as of Monday or Tuesday morning, so we have it posted. I believe we already have a candidate that is interested, which is excellent news, so there will be obviously updates on that as soon as I hear, I will share with the school committee where where we fall with that, because I'm hoping that we can secure this and get it up and running before the next school committee meeting. And I agree with you, Sheri, I was disappointed on this too, but coming in new, I wasn't going to make a decision to bring on a brand-new staff member July 1, when I didn't know what the elementary programs looked like, what our student population looked like, but I I do feel like I worked very closely with the staff, she's gone now, and worked with them to to gather numbers, gather data, get information from them, so I could meet with you and have a very direct conversation about what the data is that supports the need for an additional person.
I'm sure we're all thinking the same thing, this is a very difficult time to find a quality special education teacher, a very important position. If we had somebody who was internal that had the qualification, I can't even believe I am saying this, but I would like to at least take a good look at that person if we know he or she and so forth and has the qualifications.
So we're going to take a good look, the trickle-down effect becomes.
Oh, I know what the trickle. Yes, I've heard of it.
So it would be taking you out of your classroom, where you've already built an established relationship with students, especially at K1, where everything's about relationships, moving someone, so there's a balance in that. We're going to find the best person, I, we're absolutely going to find a best person, it's just a little more complex once the year starts.
I think the lower the grade level though, the easier the transition for for students. So I have no idea what you're talking about, you might be talking about a brace or a middle school, probably not a middle school if you're looking for an elementary. What is that certification now? It used to be.
Mild to moderate disabilities.
K to 12?
Usually pre-K to five, I think it usually falls under, or K to five.
Used to be K to eight, so, okay. I just wanted to make sure that we we look at all, because this is a tough one, we want we want somebody really good.
I know, and it is a tough time of the year, but we will do our best to find somebody that's qualified.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, just to the chair, given that these are new positions, do we have to vote this, and what's the protocol there?
For the positions themselves?
For the, yes. Do we have to vote those?
We do not have to vote on them because of the fact that they're not an increase to the budget. In our meeting with the, Kara was supportive of supporting them within the guidelines of the current budget, so there is no, I think it was just more coming to the full committee and getting a support to move forward with this. As Jean and I met with with Ashley and Alan, we recognized that we were one in two of eight, but we wanted to make sure it's brought here, that we're all in full support of it, but the, from a compliance standpoint, there is no vote required because it's not an impact of an increase to the budget.
Understood, okay, yeah, and 100% full, full support of that. The position was posted on Monday?
Tuesday morning.
Tuesday, okay. Well, some of the committee heard about it first tonight, so I just think we need to be a little bit more proactive in getting information out, but that's okay.
Yep, so when we met with the team, this was the first meeting that we had with the full school committee, we made the decision to not lose time on this, to move forward with the posting, so that was Jean and I moving forward. But again, we said that this has to come before us in this particular case, and this was the first opportunity on the school committee perspective.
Yep.
Because it was a compliance thing, it was big.
Any other questions? Right, subcommittee updates, regional finance, nothing outside of we just need to start scheduling, but I think part of the first thing is get the budget year schedule so we can align with meeting for the regional income. Superintendent's evaluation?
Nothing at this point, but I mean, I think it's probably safe to throw out there that we should be meeting probably sooner rather than later, and I think a conversation with the superintendent regarding, do we want, do we think his evaluation process should kind of mirror what we do as a district overall, with the same dates and deadlines, I think that's up for us to discuss, but those conversations need to take place.
Wellness Health Committee?
The first meeting is on October 11th, 3 o'clock.
And Policy Subcommittee is going to have their.
We just put something on the topic.
Yeah, you just did.
Any other business that may come before the meeting, from anybody, questions?
Yeah, just, just one thing, pretty important vote coming up in in Freetown on October 18th, at the special town meeting, the question about whether or not to join Bristol Plymouth as a vocational district will be on the warrant, I received the warrant article the other day. There will be kind of an informational one or two pager, depending on how verbose we are. We'll be coming out shortly and we'll get that out to to all the folks and just make sure that we get as many people in the room as possible, because it is an important meeting, so just wanted to say that publicly.
It's just the vote to become a member.
Correct. And when is that meeting again?
October 18th.
Are we meeting again before the 18th? No.
October 19th.
13th is a Thursday.
Yeah, it's Wednesday, the 19th.
Oh, we're meeting right after that, correct. Any other items? I know you're new to the district here, but I'm going to put on my Bob Clark hat here, we do a senior breakfast typically in the fall and the spring, so if we can get that back on the the docket before the weather turns.
Before the snow flies.
Yeah, so.
Typically October.
You tell us, Ms. Bay works in that particular case, you know, and what date worked, and then we can coordinate with both the senior centers of Lakeville and Freetown.
One spot again.
One spot, it was at the middle school, it worked out great.
Renee, we'll talk about that tonight. Yeah, middle school?
Yeah, the middle school, yep.
You'll need to give it enough time so that the senior centers can bring in their newsletter.
Yeah, so we're probably looking at maybe beginning of November.
So probably November.
Yep, right, so.
It could do early November, so they're going to think in Turkey that senior breakfast would be good.
So we have our upcoming events that are coming up there, some of which we've talked about in the reports here, but I will, I am 13, entertain a motion to adjourn at 8:42.
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have a good night, all. Thank you.